All right, as it is seven o'clock, I will call the meeting to order. We'll begin with our mission statement. The mission of the Bold School District is to provide all learners in the Bold community an education designed to develop creativity, character, and competence and skills essential to flourish in a changing global society. That being said, we will also stand and do our blood allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So all members are present, our administration is president, present, not president, is the president. So we will begin with the approval of the agenda, and there is one thing to add.
Yeah, if you guys wouldn't mind if we could add just a closed session at the very end to talk a lot of personnel.
All right. So.
Make the motion to approve our agenda.
Colleen has made the motion to approve the agenda.
I will second.
Bookdo has seconded with what we have added. Are there any questions or anything else anyone would like to discuss in terms of the agenda? Hearing nothing else, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Recognition of visitors to the board meeting. Thank you so much for everyone coming out. We have students, we have community people, we have staff, we have our some Zoom, we're using Zoom just an observe tool tonight. What's going to happen, I think, down the road is that we are going to probably do not Facebook Live, but YouTube Live, but we're still trying to figure out those details. So just in order to make it available for people just to observe in the community and also used as recording, we'll be using Zoom this evening. So thank you all for coming out. Well, I'll try to keep things moving along as best as we can. Public forum. So our public forum is an opportunity for public input, and each person who would like to speak gets up to two minutes of time. It's time of listening by the board. So you speak and come up in front of the camera and we will listen. And if anyone would like to speak now would be the time. All right, Todd. Mr. Frank, sorry.
Either one.
Doctor Frank, sorry. All right. Yep.
Tonight, you're going to discuss item number 200 new businesses, your relationship with ICS Consulting Services. Back many months ago, a letter was sent to you as a board member urging you not to enter into any new contracts with ICS. And there's been citizens added on to the facilities committee. I hope that you listen to the recommendation of both citizens and vote to dissolve the relationship with ICS. Let's move the district forward. We as citizens, as taxpayers, as parents, we want to improve the facilities in this district. And I think the only way to do that is to dissolve that relationship. And so I encourage you to vote no or whatever to dissolve that relationship. And to do that, one says that you trust what the community is telling you, it trusts what Mr. Menton is doing as superintendent. And so that's my encouragement to you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, would anyone else like to speak? Seeing no one else, we will move on to our consent items. And we only need one motion to approve the consent item. So this month we have approving the bills for payment, approving the minutes of the August 23rd of 2021 meeting. Motion is made by Bookdo. Seconded by Bowen. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. I just got well, I guess they are important. Um, one, and I think I can ask Derek back here. Um, we paid $3,750 to the Bold Baseball Association for groundskeeper. Must be the baseball grounds.
That's that's the rental agreement that the district, we have a contract with Baseball Association. I think it's 750 a month.
Right, yeah.
That's been paid every year.
Are they nonprofit?
The Baseball Association would be nonprofits, yes. The agreement is that the costs are split. I'd have to look at the contract to know for sure, but we pay a portion of it to basically have a rent to play there.
Okay, I was, I was going to ask that for Lindsay today, and that was a question I didn't get to her. And then there might be this question later, so I'm just going to kind of clarify this. In here, tonight, we're approving $4,242 for a football field paint striper. Which, from what I understand, has been desperately needed for quite a while. And when I ask this question, how come we're paying for this and getting a donation? From what I understand, she ends are donating, and that's an undisclosed amount. They want to keep quiet on that, but that's where that comes in. We're paying for it here, but they're donating towards that for that paint striper. So I just want to clarify that, in case there is a question. That's all I got. That's it.
Right, anything else? All right, hearing nothing else, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Personnel, number one, approved preschool staff as follows. Lindsay Rangel as the coordinator and preschool teacher, Cassidy Zimmerman, preschool teacher, Lori Lubitz, parent educator, Josette Repke, ECFE teacher, Jody Nibauer, paraprofessional, Kathy Verdina, paraprofessional, Lori Minko, para-professional, Tanya Miller-Ziller, paraprofessional.
Someone will win.
Motion is made by Colleen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Benson. Any questions or discussion on any of those? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number two, approve the resignation. Slow down. Approve the resignation of Shane Sees Kitchen Staff effective August 31st of 2021. Some of the questions made by Bookdo.
Seconded.
Seconded by Benson. Any questions or discussion? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number three, approve the resignation of Tracy Starr, paraprofessional, effective September 21st of 2021. So motion is made by Bowen, seconded by Jacobs. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number four, approve the resignation of Jennifer Benson, food service staff, effective September 14th of 2021.
Someone will win.
Motion is made by Colleen, seconded by Bowen. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay or abstain.
Abstain.
All right, motion carries. All right, number five, approve the resignation of Steve Solom, junior high basketball, girls' basketball coach, effective August 24th of 2021. So motion is made by Bookdo.
Seconded by Colleen.
Seconded by Colleen. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number six, approve the resignation of the .5 FTE musical choreographer, Deborah Siller, effective September 7th of 2021.
Someone will dance.
Motion is made by Benson. I will second that.
Can you second that?
Yeah. Yep, I'm a voting member, I can. I can, I just, I choose to usually step back, so I'm not perceived as controlling things, so I'm just trying to run the mean here, so keep going. All right, any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number seven, approve Catherine Myers as a .5 FTE musical choreographer, effective September 20th of 2021, pay level D of the 2019-2021 EA Master Agreement. So motion is made by Bowen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bookdo. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we can vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number eight, approve Nathan Kubash as an assistant wrestling coach, beginning with 2021-2021 school year, 2022 about that school year, pay level B of the 2019-2021 EA Master Agreement.
Someone will win.
Motion is made by Colleen, seconded by Jacobs. Any questions or discussion? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number nine, approve Anthony Maher as a junior high wrestling coach, beginning with the 2021-2022 school year, pay level C of the 2019-2021 EA Master Agreement.
Someone will dance.
Motion is made by Benson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Colleen. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number 10, approve Marial Oles, special education paraprofessional, grade two, step one of the 2019-2022 ASME Council 65 AFL-CIO Labor Agreement for the Paraprofessionals Food Service and Administrative Assistance. Some of the questions made by Bookdo.
Seconded.
Seconded by Benson. Any questions or discussion? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number 11, approve Brenna Quilar as a food service staff, grade three, step one of the 2019-2022 ASME Council 65 AFL-CIO Labor Agreement, paraprofessional, food service, and administrative assistance. Motion is made by Bowen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Benson. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number 12, approve Jeanette Jangula as a food service staff, grade three, step one of the 2019-2022 ASME Council 65 AFL-CIO Labor Agreement for Paraprofessional Food Service and Administrative Assistance. So which is made by Bookdo. Seconded by Jacobs. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number 13, approve Elsa Shea as the assistant dance coach, beginning with the 2021-2022 school year, pay level B of the 2019-2021 EA Master Agreement.
Someone will win.
Motion is made by Colleen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Benson. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number 14, approve Carrie Gilbertson as junior varsity dance coach, beginning with the 2021-2022 school year, pay level C of the 2019-2021 EA Master Agreement. So Jacobs. Motion is made by Jacobs.
Seconded.
Seconded by you know, Benson.
Whatever. Take it out of there. I'm not going to fight.
All right, any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Approve an FMLA leave for Tara Rodmeyer for August 11th, 2021 through September 19th of 2021. So motion is made by Bowen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bookdo. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
I just have one comment. This is awesome, seeing a lot of these familiar names that graduated from here.
Yeah, that is very cool. All right, moving on to reports. We will begin with our superintendent's report.
All right, a few things on here. The class of 1977 signed donation did get approved at our meeting, the variance committee meeting a couple of weeks ago now. It's still kind of, we're waiting for the go-ahead to move forward from the city council, their meeting tonight, and I assume tomorrow we'll hear that. We've provided them with a management plan, just basically stating that we're going to operate the sign between the hours of 7:30 in the morning through 9:30 at night, so it can go off and not bother area houses. And then also on that, we're not going to be doing any advertising unless it's for like a a team fundraiser or something like that. But no advertising on it, and everything will be appropriate. It actually says vulgar language, which I thought that was interesting that they wanted us to put that on there, but okay. So they've got that. As far as facilities, we had a really good facility committee meeting last week, and it was Thursday at nine o'clock. I want to thank Linda Ram, who took meeting minutes for us. We got those, and I sent those out to the committee here just after I was done. I work here today. And she did a good job with those. The committee is going to be making, or has made, two recommendations for us, and I emailed those to you last Friday. But basically to, and I'll, actually, I'll just read it here right now. The first proposal is to sell as-is the east 215 feet of the 300-foot by 580-foot tract lying south of the athletic field for the price of $1 to the Splash Island Adventure Park. The purchase will be contingent on the group successfully securing funding, and the purchase agreement will remain active for 18 months. Their second proposal that they came up with is to discontinue our relationship with ICS. And we talked, we talked a little more about that. There's an outstanding bill of $9,750. We're not sure what that's for. We've paid them $15,000. We want to look into, if we owe the money, we owe the money. If we don't, we're not going to pay it, but we want to see what exactly that money was for. So based on our meeting tonight, if we discontinue services, I will find that out. And get us an itemized, either way, I'll get us an itemized breakdown, so we can understand what we got. And then we actually, we discussed a bunch of questions that we want to ask if we do discontinue services and go with another company. And they've got a good list of questions. I'll send those out to you so you can see them. But just what do we want to know from a new company before we sign on with them? And so that was the gist of our meeting, and
Another thing.
Yeah, no, no, go right ahead.
Another thing that Greg had brought up too, with what we've done with ICS, to find out if we owe money, we owe money. It's not a deal breaker if we have to pay him some more money to get out of it, but if we don't owe it to him, then we're not going to do that. Another thing Greg brought up is that we're going to get ICS to send us all the information on the breakdowns from the the walkthroughs and what they thought this cost this much and this cost this, so we would have all of that information to use going into the next thing, too. We wouldn't necessarily be starting from complete scratch.
All right. Let's see. We've got a kind of a weird problem coming up with Esser III funding. We have to come up with a proposal to spend a lot of money by October 1st. And we've been meeting as an admin team, as the whole grand admin team. We've, we need to get some community input. What we're banking on the fact that they're going to allow us to put a plan together and then revise it significantly. We've got some really good ideas on there, but we need to have community input, we need to have board input on that, so I will send that out as soon as we get it done. Like I said, this is it's it's coming as a huge surprise for a lot of districts right now, because we all thought that we were, it was good enough by signing off on the Safe Return to Schools Plan, we thought that we would be able to to then start accepting these Esser III funds. That's almost, it's not quite $1.1 million. In fact, I wrote down, there's 20% of the, there's two parts to this. 20% of it has to be spent on like credit recovery and things to improve lost learning time, and so 20% of it comes to And then the remaining 80%, which should be, I'm sure you've already done the math in your heads, That is much more free on how we can spend that. So we're going to, we've got some really good ideas that really address what the state wants us to focus on. They've got, there's about 15, 10, 15 focus areas the state wants us to look at, which, in my opinion, cover almost, almost anything we could hope to do. For example, starting after-school programs or hiring extra personnel that can work with kids or all kinds of stuff. Again, we're, we're not alone in this. There's a lot of schools that were surprised by this. And they asked for an extension, but the federal, this is coming from the federal government, and they already thought that October 1st was too late, so but I've never seen, knock on wood, I've never seen anything where you couldn't put in a plan and then revise it. There's, there's no way any, any school would be able to put together a detailed plan on how they're going to spend that much money and not be able to revise it, so. But I'll keep you posted on that. And once, oh, so I've got, one other thing I want to mention. Teresa brought to me a letter that she'd received, and it was an anonymous letter. And if, and I thank you for bringing that to me right away. I just want to talk a little bit about anonymous letters. If we, when we receive something that's anonymous, we'll look into it. But it's, it's not very effective. I have way more questions of the author than I can, than I have of what's for whatever is involved in there. One of the things that the author wanted us to do was discuss this letter at a board meeting. Well, it involves some personnel issue, and we can't discuss that at an open meeting. It's not what we're going to be discussing later on today. But we can't, we can't do that at an open meeting, so I want to encourage people, if they have a complaint, if you can, bring it to the person directly. If you don't feel comfortable doing that, they need to then start going up that chain of command. If it's a, if it's a teacher, a para, or a stodion secretary, go to their immediate supervisor, go to the principal. If the problem is not being taken care of by the principal, then, or it's about the principal, bring it to me. And then I'll make sure it gets taken care of. In this particular one, we're digging into it, but again, like I say, we have, we have more questions that really need to be answered before we can do a lot of, a lot of work with this. So again, anonymous letters, they might, it might seem easier to write it, but for us, it's way easier if we can then contact that person and at least, and then follow up with them, saying, hey, we, we got that and we dealt with it. Thank you for sending that to us. So that's, that's all I got to say on that.
What is the process? So like saying somebody has an issue, they bring it to, I mean, sometimes I think people are worried about the domino effect's going to happen with their kids in school.
Yeah.
So they don't want to say who they are or what their thoughts are because of that.
Right.
So how can that be kept confidential from everybody else involved without having their child, you know?
Right. That's a, it's a fair question, and if it's, if it's to the level where they're worried about that kind of reaction, then they probably should take it to the supervisor. So, but more often than not, those things can be solved right on a, at the level of the teacher, the coach, or whoever it is, wherever that problem is. We, we have, we're in a job where we want to help kids, and and sometimes egos get in the way. But for the most part, most people want to do a better job to, to meet those kids' needs better, and they find out they're doing something that's adverse to those kids, that they want to change that. But I certainly understand how uncomfortable that could be, especially if it's something really negative, you know? Maybe it's a teacher that's constantly yelling at a kid or something like that. I could see where they might want to take it to that next level. One of the things that I always did as a principal, I would always ask, have you spoken with the teacher yet? Because for me personally, if somebody were upset with something I was doing, I would rather, before they went to you guys, I would much rather they came and talked to me about it, so I could fix it, and that doesn't have to go to you. And, you know, a lot of you guys are employers, you understand that the chain of command is important, and and I've had, I've talked about that with people, too. I'll say, have you talked to the teacher? Well, no, I didn't really want to. I thought, I said, well, you're bringing it to their boss now. Would you rather, if I had a problem with you, if I talked to you, or would you rather me talk to your boss about it? And I'd say eight or nine times out of 10, they, they say no, I'll give them a call. And it's not just passing, it's not, we're trying to pass the buck, it's that, it's just the way stuff should go. But again, if they're not comfortable talking to that person, that's, then you do, you got to go up the ladder.
Thank you. Can I just respond if that person is listening? I agree with Mr. Menton. It makes it very hard for a board member to follow up with an anonymous letter, because you don't, it'd be nice to be able to reach out and visit with that person one-on-one. So going forward, I would encourage you to sign your name and/or call or visit me face-to-face. I welcome any open dialogue with anybody.
Well said.
Thank you. That's all I have. Any questions for me? That you're supposed to ask. Okay.
We don't stand on ceremony.
All right, moving on. K through 12 principal reports included in the packet, and Mr. Benson is here to answer any questions. Or if you have anything to add.
Anything to add? Touch on it? Homecoming should be finalized now. It'll be sent out. The staff got it today. It'll be sent out to communities tomorrow at some point. That's next week. One thing that I've started, and it kind of looked like a goofball up there today, I was outside with an umbrella. I've just been greeting all the senior high kids, well, if you haven't been to school, because that's the group that I don't know yet. So that's kind of where I'm spending my time in the morning. I know my daughter was kind of embarrassed when I was out there with an umbrella, but that's part of the job, I guess.
She's embarrassed even if you don't have an umbrella.
So we've got, for K4, we've got our fast up and going. That will be our assessments to get us into different title groups, which will help us, as Mr. Men was talking about, the Esser money, helping students that are struggling or a little bit behind to get a backup, and that's what that program is for. K6, we are, I don't know if I talked about this last time, we're doing top 20. That's going to be up and going here now. That's more of a social, emotional learning program. Hopefully that will help us, you know, as we've lost, you know, basically a year and a half because of COVID. This is a program that I think we were going to develop and use as our own. And hopefully we see the effects moving up the ladder. This year, it's, you know, an implementation period, so it's going to be a little bumps in the road to try to get that thing going. But we've got that up and going. It's great to see the students. They've been in the building now for three, two and a half weeks roughly, started the third week. I think the one thing that that I heard the first day of school, which would have been Tuesday, the 7th roughly, they walked in the building and Margaret and the kitchen staff had the cafeteria deck. Um, they walked in the, the building and Margaret and the kitchen staff had the cafeteria decorated. Um, I don't know how many, oh, that's cool, or that's something they've never done before. So that was really cool to see. Um, and really cool for. I'm gonna say that the high school students to, to recognize that. Um, so, good job on that. Um, technology has been working perfectly, knock on wood, uh, for us this year. Uh, so that's something that, uh, we want, hopefully keeps working for us, and it would, and it will. Um, yes, that's kind of what I have for my report. Any questions for me?
All right, we'll be on to activities report, also included in the packet. Mr. Flynn, have anything to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to update on a couple of things here that I've got in. The softball co-op with BLHS that I had talked about at the last meeting, I think. They have pulled out any interest in that, it sounds like, because their new A D was unaware that this would cause them to go up a class for playoffs. Um, that's not a new thing. He's new, he wasn't aware of that. He went to a conference meeting and brought it up to his conference to see if they would accept the co-op program. And their conference A Ds, who were a little more aware of this, told him that it's gonna cause them to go up. And he responded to me the next day and said that they're not interested in it. Um, I haven't had time to connect with Coach Mack yet about how we want to move forward with this. We're in a fairly desperate situation right now because our numbers are really low. Um, we may contact some other schools regarding co-ops. Um, and we might have to go as far as to have some. Player parent meetings to see who's actually going to be there, so we know if we would have enough for a season. Or if we need to do something more drastic right now. So, uh, plan. Well, plan A would be to have all kinds of girls out for softball. That one fell through. Plan B has now fallen through. We're gonna go to C and we'll. We'll stop when we get to one that works, but I, it's unfortunate, that's just the way this one worked out. Um, also, if you, if you saw this in your packet, this is the emergency action plan that, um. We went through at our coaches' meetings this fall about having each program do this. Um, if you go to our volleyball games down here, you'll see it posted right when you walk in the door. It's on the left. Um, essentially, this is a quick meeting that the team does to figure out. If something terrible happens, who's responsible for what? So it deals with. Where the nearest phone is at your practice facility, where the nearest A E D is, um, who to contact. Which people on the team should go to the entry point for the ambulance and meet them to direct them as quickly to the person as possible. Um, who knows CPR and can aid in that? Um, you know, there was a, an incident at Wasika High School that some of you may heard about where their coach. Um, had a cardiac incident on the, right after the first game of the season. Um, he's, Brad's up and around now, but has taken the rest of the year off. Um, their response was pretty efficient. At a game, a football game especially, where there's typically an ambulance there is, is much easier than something happening at practice. Um, two motivations for this, it's been a priority for the high school league for a couple of years. We've been. Kind of slow to get on board, but we're trying to get there now. And like I told my football team. The person most likely to go down with there is me, so let's make sure we got this thing together. Right? Um, so you should see these posted at practice facilities because each team needs their own. If our C squad volleyball is down here, they need their own plan compared to the varsity and JV that might be in the large gym. Um, there's, I finally got mine laminated, so we'll go up on the shed out here. Cross country's a little more difficult because they're not in the same spot, but. Um, their start and finish and just being aware of who's responsible for things is, is key, so. Hopefully they sit there and rot and never get used.
I do have a question. So under the CPR A E, A E D team.
Yep.
And the two students there, have they had CPR training?
Uh, they have had as much as anybody that we have on the team. Um, Sagal and Gross are both, have both been trained a number of times. I don't know if they have a certification. But they've been through the training and the refresher. Um, I know Ethan and Tate have both. Have some experience with it, and I've been through it with Owen briefly, just to give them a, the best we can.
Yeah, what would it take to get them CPR trained and certified for kids?
Um. Jimmy, you don't want?
Money?
It would take about twelve dollars. Twelve dollars if you go online, they can take it and get certified.
Okay.
There's all different, uh, levels of it, uh, where you could get from healthcare provider all the way down to just A E D or first aid. Oh, it takes about, to read through it, probably would take them to twenty minutes. I mean, just. They would get some certification in it, and it, it might not, it's not as good as all the hands-on stuff, but at least you have an idea of fifteen to two or thirty to.
So my suggestion would be for sure those two, but what about the whole football team going through that at some point, and just having that knowledge? It's lifesavers for themselves to help in any incident wherever they're at, and at twelve bucks. Maybe we get somebody to donate that one.
Uh, it, it comes down to time, you know, more than anything, and, and, and trying to, to find the time to get it done with everybody.
Um, it'd probably be more appropriate in the P E class or something like that.
All students do get a cursory CPR training in their, in their middle school health class.
Yeah. So they, it's not a certificate. That, but not a, and I've never looked at what, what.
And it changes all the time.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And we would have, I mean, this isn't just football, this will be done for, hopefully for every team at every level throughout the year. Um, so then we, I mean. You'd be getting to a couple hundred kids, which, not that we can't do that, but it's difficult to coordinate sometimes, in fact, time for, so.
CPR has changed us so much for a layperson because it's, just keep the heart pumping, that's all you gotta do, just keep pushing, pushing, and pushing until someone else gets there. I mean, it's not a, it's super duper training. It used to be, if people feared it because of how intense it, you had to remember to do this, and then do this, and then do this. Now, they're just like, keep heart, make your blood go through it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the gist of it. I mean, it's not a complicated process. They don't have to be M Ds, they don't have to do any of it, they just. So it's a pretty simple concept to it, it's. And A Ds walk you through it.
The A D tells you step by step.
Yep. And I know. This year, we didn't do it, and last year because of COVID, we didn't. We used to not do a certification course, but do a retraining with coaches every fall. Um, I just didn't get it, that's completely my fault, I didn't get it scheduled this fall because the people who used to train it aren't there anymore. Um, but that's something usually our coaches go through, and we'll get back to next year.
Well, thanks for taking ownership of that, and I commend you for doing this.
Yeah, I like those.
Yeah, yeah, I, like I said, I hope they're never needed, but they're there if they are.
But maybe what we can do too is just put a sign up sheet and see, I mean, not all kids are gonna wanna. Just, they're not gonna all wanna learn it, but maybe there are some that do, and if there's. People often, maybe we could get somebody to donate some money to keep those, because I think that, that'd be kind of neat to have. This is very nice. I like this.
Uh, any other questions? I have not yet. We're still, we've, we've tried to reach out to Dunx, but they. Don't actually, they subcontract them, I believe, so we have to get more down to who actually does it. Um, and that's proving more difficult, um, because the ones I knew were through Dunx on a larger project. That they subcontracted that out, so, um, hopefully soon.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you. Moving on, school board need reports, is there anything? Anyone on the school board would like to report? Being needing to have been to more. Well, I don't know if there's so much to report on it, but just sitting through the facilities and, um, thinking, you know, moving forward. Um, one thing that comes to mind with me with the memorandum of, uh, understanding coming up. And with facilities is that the roof repair on the big gym in Rhode Island, since we're still using it. And we'll probably be using it for a number of years until something comes up. I truly feel that since it's been already taken off the schedule, we should fix it. We do have the funds to do it. Um, if you look back into our budget or our monies that is sitting out here, we have money to repair that roof. And I think we should put that on and, and get that done immediately because we, we'll need that gym regardless of where we go. So I think that we should bring that up in a discussion later. Okay. Uh, moving on to poor report, which is included in the packet, and. Looks like you are meeting Wednesday, September twenty ninth. So. Other than that, if you have more questions, please contact Tracy and we'll hear what you guys hear after meeting. All right, moving on to new business. So number one, approved proposal from the facilities committee. Regarding the request for land purchase in Rhode Island.
I'll read the proposal again. Uh, it's to sell as is the east two hundred and fifteen feet. Of the three hundred foot by five hundred eighty foot tract. Lying south of the athletic field for the price of one dollar to the Splash Island Adventure Park. Purchase will be contingent on the group successfully securing funding, and the purchase agreement will remain active for eighteen months.
Which is made by Bowen, seconded by Bookdo. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, moving on. Number two, approved proposal from the facilities committee regarding the future of I C S and bold schools.
Once again, I'll read the proposal. It's to discontinue our relationship with I C S.
Made by Benson, seconded by Jacobs. Any discussion or questions?
Are we gonna give them reasoning why?
They know why. We had Pat Overham came down, he met with, with, uh, a bunch of us, and, and we had really good questions for him. And they understand, they get it. They do.
All right, anything else?
And you're gonna look into that ninety seven hundred?
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
All right, hearing nothing else, we will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Yeah, number three, approve the revised M O U with the chalkboard of the chalkboard. So it looks like what's been changed on, so everything has been changed, it's in yellow.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, Mark Gleisner came over, he, uh, emailed this to me, and then we had a discussion about it last. Thursday, I think, and, uh. It's been straightforward.
All right. Is there, I just have one question. Um, the only thing I look at is the, the building demolition, the one million dollars, and this is insane, I don't want to do it. I just wonder if, um, to put a dollar amount on it, you know what I mean, the last referendum, it was, it was said that it would cost a million dollars to. Take the school down, or what if it's more, or what if it's less? If you don't have an exact dollar amount in there, you know what I'm saying? That's the only thing that's liquid right now, as far as it goes, is things are changing in the economy all the time, and so you don't know. Is one million right? Is one million not enough? Is it too much? To say it right now, I know this is just a, an agreement that's not. Etched in stone or anything like that, but I just wondered what you guys thought about that. It's the only, I think, I believe it's the only number thing in here.
That's a good point. Maybe just taking the one, so referendum which allowed for building demolition, and just taking that dollar amount, taking that one.
So we don't want it to be double either.
No, that's just.
I.
Not to exceed a million dollars, like, whatever you.
Whatever happens, it's gonna be around that. Whatever happens, when we, we're gonna have to go with what, what the state allows us to do.
Right.
If you remember last time when we were doing this, we had looked at doing like three million, and, and they said, the state's not gonna hurt that, so.
Uh, I'm a, I'm a handshaker, so I, you know, I've got, you know, I think there's good faith. Involved too, if you leave the millionaire that you would just do the right thing when the time comes.
Right.
But I just wanted to make sure nobody else had a question about it, or, or, at least so that it's understood going into it.
And that's a valid point, just like with I C S. If we own the money, we own the money. That's just a fact. So in good faith, it's like, we'll review it like you're going to. And if we do, we do. If we don't, we don't. Same here too.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Hearing nothing else, we will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number four, adopt certified, proposed two thousand twenty one cable, two thousand twenty two maximum levy. Number two. Seconded by Owen. Any discussion or questions?
I have questions. Could somebody just explain that more to me? This is new to me, I don't. Are we approving that this is what it's going to be? And who comes up with the numbers?
This, we, we do this every year, and it's just the, the maximum that we can levy without a. Without a vote. It's standard, we, we've done this every year. Can't say every year.
Well, Minnesota Department of Education, I mean, this. Think between.
Yeah, she's gonna have to be here. Uh, she's, she's gonna have to be the one that answers any technical questions, but.
Because I see it's decreased by five point, by one percent for the total overall.
And that could be from. Yeah, I don't even want to speculate on that, because I'll say it wrong, and then I'm on camera.
Sorry, folks, that's not, we'll hope they don't understand it, so I need somebody to explain it to me.
Could I chime in?
Sure.
So the proposed amount is what the maximum is allowed by law, and at one point you have to set the maximum limit. And you can't go above a proposed amount, so if you set the proposed at this amount. For what you actually set it, and I believe it's two months from now, um, has to be at that level. For the action.
This is why I don't like talking about, I'm not talking about.
So why would the pay limitation be less for this year than last year?
Uh, that would have to do with the formula is that the state.
Okay.
The education, so also with the county assessors. Where Mark is in the assessors office, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So therefore, we can't really change it, we just either agree or disagree.
It's, they do this every year.
All right.
But if we want one money? Then we need to go, we have to go to the bucks, so, okay.
Any other questions that unfortunately probably won't get answered? Until we talk to Lindsay. All right, hearing nothing else, we will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Name, only because they don't.
All right, number five, approve M R E A, uh, the Minnesota Rural Education Association membership for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. Number three. Which is made by Bookdo.
Second.
Seconded by Owen. Any discussion or questions?
Obviously, the name of the membership's changing.
Yes.
Name and email.
Yes, it will. Anything else?
Well, the only wording I don't care for in here is where it says, thank you for your continued membership, that is essential to advocating for equitable education opportunities. Um, the equitable part, I think should just be for equal educational, the equitable part, I don't care for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a very political, political organization, so I'm assuming that is, is as P C as they. Political organization, so I'm assuming that is is as PC as they want to be there. So they do do great work for our rural schools though. So you're a great voice for us. So anything else? Hearing nothing, we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. All right, number six, approve resolution establishing an absentee ballot board since we have an election coming up here in November. So we will, we have a resolution and I will read it. Please respond accordingly when you're what I say. Anyway, member introduce the following resolution and move this adoption. Resolution establishing absentee ballot board, whereas the school or of independent school district number 2534 state of Minnesota is required by Minnesota statutes 203B. Point 121 subdivision 1 to establish an absentee ballot board effective 12/28/2020. And whereas this board will bring uniformity in the processing of accepting or rejecting returned absentee ballots in both public school in the school district number 2534. And whereas the absentee ballot board would consist of three election judges. Christine Weidman, Helen Ruhl, and Carol Alquist, as provided in sections 204B. Point 22 or deputy county auditors trained in the processing and counting of absentee ballots. Therefore be it resolved by school board of independent school district number 2534 state of Minnesota hereby establishes an absentee ballot board that will consist of a sufficient number of election judges as provided in sections 204B. Point 19 to 204B. Point 22 or deputy auditors to perform the task. The motion for adoption of this foregoing resolution is duly seconded by member
Bowlin.
Bowlin. And upon a vote being taken there on the following voted in favor thereof, Sandy.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Tracy. Jamie.
Aye.
Teresa.
Aye.
And myself, I am an I. So the foregoing resolution was adopted approved this 20th day of September 2021. So we have some policies, but these are the third readings of these policies. So number seven is approved policy 102 equal educational opportunity. It's the third month and third reading. So now we will approve. So then, which is made by Benson. I can Jacob, okay. Seconded by Jacobs. Any questions or discussion? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number eight, policy 401 equal employment opportunity.
I'll take the motion to this.
Thank you. Which is made by Bookto. Seconded by Bowlin. Any discussion or questions on that policy equal opportunity? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number nine, approved policy 402 disability non-discrimination policy. Number seven. I will make that motion. Handsome in the motion and Bowlin seconded. Any discussion or questions on policy number, inclusion number seven? Hearing nothing, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number 10, approved policy 532 use of peace officers and crisis teams to remove students with IEPs from school grounds. Number eight. Motion is made by Bookto and seconded, okay, seconded by Benson. Any questions or discussion about the policy 532? All right, hearing nothing, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number 11, approved policy 713 student activity accounting. Implosure number nine. Which is made by Owen. By Bowlin. Any discussion or questions on 713 here?
I have a question. Okay, under non-student activities. Under the booster fund. Is there any way when people are when they're doing the fundraising and people are buying stuff to help that fundraiser, is there any way they could find out that evening what the those funds are going to be used for? Or what the money is raised for? I know it's a booster and it goes in a general pot, but is it just for that sport and for the students or is it, do we pay like, does anybody get like a statement out of it? That's what I'm just wondering.
No, nobody's paid to run any of the fundraisers now.
Okay.
Right, any other questions? Hearing nothing, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to number 12 is the first reading policy 410. It's the family and medical leave policy. It's a closure number 10. We're just first reading. Oh, so if you had, if you read through it, if you have any questions. So we'll have, we'll read it this month, next month and approve it in what?
December.
December. One month it is here. So so being the first reading, plan on on looking it over more closely and you see anything that you question? Either bring it to Mr. Menton or we can discuss it in a meeting. So so that's the first reading of policy 410. Number 13 is the first reading of policy 514, which is the bowling prohibition policy. Again, it's first reading, so please take time to look it over and if you have questions, please contact Mr. Menton. Or if anybody has questions tonight. Right. Moving on, we have upcoming dates. Only really have one upcoming date. But so number one would be October 25 of 2021 is our school board meeting at 7:00 PM here in the district office. And then we have number 10 is adopt a resolution to acknowledge and accept gifts, grants and requests. So again, a resolution. So member
Benson.
Benson. Introduce the following resolution and move this adoption, whereas she and gases generously donated a new paint sprayer for both school. Therefore be it be resolved by the old school board to gratefully accept these gifts. The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by member
Bowlin.
Bowlin. And upon a vote being taken there on the following voted in favor thereof, Teresa.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Sandy.
Hey.
And myself, I am an I. So the foregoing resolution was approved this 20th day of September 2021. Thank you very much for the for the donation. Yeah. Okay. Let's oh, session is on here. Sorry, I'm sorry. It was on here already. I missed it. All right, so at this time, we will be going into close session to discuss personnel issue per Minnesota state statute 13D. Point 05 subdivision 2. To close the meeting. So the motion was made by Jamie. And Brian seconded that. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Thank you all very much for coming in. If you guys need to sign, now we have time to do.
John is good. Okay, thanks.